We'll call our March 17th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Whoever will call, please.
Councilwoman Womack?
Here.
Councilwoman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Shelton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
All present, we have a call.
At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation, give it an eye by Jake Garrett, children's pastor at Life Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. God, you are grace, you are graceful, you are abounding in love, you are a God of hope, mercies, and comfort. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity to come here tonight. We thank you, Father, for the freedom that we get to enjoy in this great and wonderful county, this state, and in this country. Father, I pray for tonight that your wisdom is moving amongst the men and women who are making these decisions. I pray that, Father God, that there's unity in their decisions, always elevating the needs of the people above any personal needs. Father, I pray that tonight, this is an opportunity to move this county and these people forward, hopefully, Father, growing closer to you, but growing also in unity, knowing that we are to love our brothers and sisters as you love us. So, Father, we love you and we praise you and we thank this and ask this in your son's beautiful and powerful name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, law.
Thank you, Jake. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented, or are there any changes?
There's one slight change to item seven, B, we've added the verbiage and acceptance of various easements relative to the Shoney's water tank. It's the same item, but we want to clarify in the agenda what action is actually going to be taken.
Is there a motion on the amended agenda?
A second.
I'm sorry, a motion on the slightly changed agenda, it's actually not amended. A motion a second on that, or any other questions? Okay, we'll be doing everything by a voice. I'll call for that tonight due to a lack of operator technology for our system. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Mills? You would say aye.
That passes.
If you'd like me to handle that duty too, I will, I'll do that, then you can report it however. Okay. All right. Under, under item four, four eight, consider resolution R two two zero three zero four, honoring Gas Department Director Jeff Mills upon the occasion of his retirement. Jeff, if you want to come up here, if you want to, so we can talk about you, sir. We do want to honor you, and I'm going to read this in your honor first, and then we'll have some conversations. So, whereas embarking on a career journey in 1980 that would span over four decades as a public servant, Jeff Mills joined the employ of the Cookeville Gas Department as a gas distribution servicer. And whereas Jeff has shown loyalty and dedication to the department and citizens of Cookeville during his tenure, enjoying a notable career to be celebrated and admired as he has 42 years of distinguished service. And whereas promotions over the years include transition to gas system supervisor in 1989, advancing to administrative and compliance superintendent in 2006, before being appointed as director in 2013. And whereas Jeff has recognized the importance of civic service over the years, his involvement with professional organizations include his role as a current board member with the Tennessee Gas Association and Municipal Energy Acquisition Corporation, former service in the position of both president and vice president of Middle Tennessee Gas Distributors Association and the East Tennessee Customer Group, all of which have provided assistance to not only Cookeville and Putnam County for gas distribution, but also communities across the state during difficult times and significant weather events. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the employees and city council, sincere appreciation is hereby extended to Jeff Mills for his valuable service to the city, and best wishes are bestowed at his retirement. Now therefore be it further resolved that this most auspicious occasion be marked by honoring Jeff Mills upon the occasion of his retirement as director of the Cookeville Gas Department, and this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office adopted this 17th day of March 2022. Thank you, Jake.
In 1980, I was hired as a temporary part-time employee with the department. Forty-two years later, I made it up with a great career and a great place to work. I've been blessed to make many relationships and friendships with the different people throughout the city, citizens, as well as the ones I've worked with. And I've been honored to work with James and the other city administrators that have supported me throughout this career and all the stuff I've done. Grateful to have worked for the best department in the city of Cookeville, say that unshamely, couldn't be any more proud of our department's progress through the years. The transition of our department going forward has went seamlessly. I think Amber is ready to keep the ball rolling, and so her, the next 40 years is all hers. And then lastly, and I should probably should have started with this, but I'm lucky to have my wife Vicki by my side through these 42 years. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for your support and dedication to our department. Thank you.
Let's come down here for a picture.
We also need to note that he's made this 33-year contract, and he's coming back with me in 33 years to see the end of that.
I think we do need to vote on accepting that resolution and allowing him to retire.
Thank you, safe.
Vicki, you have a say in that if you don't want us to. All in favor, do we need, have a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second. So, all in favor of the resolution, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. Mr. Mills?
Motion carries. I'll catch on in a little bit.
Okay. Four B, consider appointments to the Historic Zoning Commission. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The current terms of Ms. Susan Vandergriff on the Historic Zoning Commission expires in April 2022. The Historic Zoning Commission also has a vacancy due to the passing of longtime member Dr. Calvin Dickinson. Dr. Dickinson served as a representative of local preservation organization. Members of the Historic Zoning Commission serve five-year terms and are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by a majority vote at the city council. Ms. Vandergriff is a resident of the most recently established East State Street Historic District, and Ms. Vandergriff has been contacted and has agreed to continue to serve if reappointed. Mr. Mark Dudney has been contacted and has agreed to serve if appointed. Mr. Dudney serves as the historic preservation planner for the upper coming development district and would fill the preservation organization role. Mark, for the planning department recommends for these appointments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, I would make the motion for Ms. Vandergriff and Mr. Dudney. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments, or questions? All right. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh.
Motion passed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under old business, five A, consider approval minutes of council meeting held on March 3rd. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second and discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh.
Passed.
Yep. Five B, consider on second and final reading, or it's O two two zero two oh one, rezoning of 5250 Tennessee Avenue, tax max 64 parcel 32, from RS 20 single-family residential to CI commercial industrial. Ms. John Ward?
Mayor and council, we've had no calls or comments since first reading, and I respectfully ask for your approval on second and final.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh.
Passed.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, six A, consider awarding bid for lawn care services for animal shelter in Highlands Park median for the Public Works Department. Six B, consider awarding bid for lawn care services for the Water Quality Control Department. Six C, consider awarding bid for uniforms for the electric department. Six D, set a date for a public hearing on 4/21/22 on ordinance O two two zero three zero two, rezoning a portion of parcel located on East Springs Street, from RM 14 multifamily residential to CL local commercial. Six E, set a date for a public hearing 4/21/22 on ordinance O two two zero three oh three, rezoning of 5411 Level Lady Road, from RS 20 to RS 5. And six F, set a date for a public hearing 4/21/22 on ordinance O two two zero three zero four, amendments to the official street map. Is there a motion on the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council on the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passed.
Thank you. Under new business, seven A, consider authorizing the city manager execute a professional services agreement for architectural engineering services related to proposed renovations at Cookeville Fire Department Station One. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and council members, funds were included in this year's budget for the development of plans to either reconstruct or renovate Cookeville Fire Stations Two and Three. And after discussions with Chief Young, we determined that renovations to Fire Station One here at City Hall should be the first priority. And I'm requesting your approval to enter into a professional service agreement with AEI for architectural and engineering services to inspect and evaluate Cookeville Fire Department Station One here at City Hall. The deliverables from this agreement include an existing, the development of an existing floor plan, a report on existing conditions that will identify areas in need of repair or renovation, and a budget of probable cost. The cost for this service agreement is $5,300, and I would request your approval to execute the agreement. I've got some photographs here that sort of show what the condition of the station one is. You can see here that we've got washer and dryer within the bathroom there, and in the showers there to the left, and some more here. You can see the roof or the ceiling. Now, the department themselves have done quite a bit of work down there. This is a relatively new floor that they've done, but you can see the condition of the ceiling. This is another storage area that we have some leakage in. And this is an area that has been recently renovated except for the ceiling. This is the break room for, for the employees. But I believe since we've done so much work at City Hall, it makes sense that we go ahead and try to finish this section up, and I'd request your approval to execute this agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Motion carries. Seven B, consider authorizing the city manager execute a MOU with Putnam County and VR3 Realty LLC in approving the acceptance of various easements relative to Shoney's water tank. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and council members, as you said, Mayor, Putnam County is requesting the approval of this memorandum of understanding between the county, the city, and V3 Realty, and it's pertaining to the sale of property identified as Shoney's Hill. The survey on the screen depicts the property that the county has an agreement to sell. It's 30.45 acres. It's located off East Veterans Drive and just to the back or the east of the Shoney's Restaurant property, which is on South Sheraton Avenue. Located on this property, in the center of the property, is a water tank owned by the city of Cookeville. We can find no record of a deed or easement granted to the city by the county for the water tank. As far as we can tell, the county just said, you have permission to build a tank there. But of course, with the sale of the property, we need to make sure we're able to retain easements for this, the water tank and the ways to get to it. And as part of the sale, if you go back to the slide before this, it includes an area of about 137 feet by 187 feet where the city's water tank is located. So that rectangle there in the center is where the water tank is. Also, within that fenced-in area are various antennas and other equipment that are owned by the county. But this is to be excluded from the sale and retained by, for the city and for the county. Also, easements for access to the water tank. The water main from the tank is a 30-inch line that runs up to the tank, and there's also electrical service that runs to the tank, are to be retained. And then the purchaser is asking for some drainage improvements, and an easement for that is also to be included. The stipulations, there are stipulations from the purchaser, V3 Realty, relative to the city and county retaining these easements as a condition for the purchase of the property. And as I said, the purchaser is also requesting that drainage lines from the water tank be installed, and that electric service be relocated by the city at some point in the future. So this agreement commits the city to future activities or future actions. Specifically, V3 Realty is requesting that the city agree to install a drainage system to pipe the overflow and excess water from the water tank to a storm sewer system that the, to be installed by the purchaser at some point in the future. So when he develops or they develop this property, they'll install storm sewer, and the maximum distance in this agreement that the city would agree to install storm sewer to drain the tank is 300 feet. So the developer has to bring the lines up to within 300 feet of our existing drainage system where we would install it. The Water Quality Control Department estimates that the current cost for this installation would be between $20,000 and $25,000. The city is also being requested to agree to relocate the existing electrical lines that serve the water tank to underground when the purchaser has installed underground electric service to within 300 feet of the existing water tank service pole. Electric Department has indicated they're fine with this, so we prefer that their line, entire line be underground. And in this case, again, the developer will be required to install underground electric to within 300 feet of the pole. Now, there are certain things that still need to be finished on this document, where there's some tweaks that need to be made. But I would request your approval to execute the MOU with the city, Putnam County, and V3 Realty, subject to changes that the city of Cookeville approves to the document. I would also ask you to approve the acceptance of the easements that would be dedicated to the city and county as part of this transaction.
Okay, can you go back to the other? There you go, thanks. Okay, so is there a motion to accept the agreement and receive the easements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Utilizing the wording that Mr. Mills said, so we have a motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
It needs to be noted, the size and the length of these easements are part of this negotiation that is still, has to be tweaked, as he said.
Correct.
So, once, once we finalize those exact descriptions, then Mr. Mills can sign the agreement.
Correct.
That's one of the conditions.
Right, that's, so utilizing his verbiage, like I said, that it would follow along those parameters. So we have a motion is second. Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. All right. Seven C, consider amendment to the East 10th Street Infrastructure Agreement. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The city of Cookeville entered into an agreement with Time Development LLC, Justin Cumbie and Wayne Cravens on January 17, 2019, to perform certain infrastructure improvements on East 10th Street relative to the planned commercial development at the corner of East 10th and Old Kentucky Road. An assignment of this infrastructure agreement was approved by the city council on January 21st, 2021, assigning the original agreement to BSM Cookeville LLC. This assignment did not release Time Development, Justin Cumbie, or Wayne Cravens from their obligations under the January 17, 2019 agreement. The initial agreement stipulated that no certificate of occupancy would be issued for the development until specific infrastructure improvements were completed. Food City is nearing completion of their location on East 10th Street, and they plan a grand opening for April 6, 2022. The developers for the project have requested that the agreement be amended to allow certificate of occupancy to be issued prior to full completion of the street improvements. The proposed amendment stipulates, street improvements must be complete to a stage satisfactory to the city, including but not limited to, completion of the southern lanes to asphalt binder stage, including travel lanes and dedicated right turn lanes, completion of all curb and gutter on the southern portion of the street, completion of curb for the right in, right out for the western entrance into the East 10th Street, completion of both access entrances into the development off East 10th Street, and completion of access on the western entrances to allow for the traffic signal to be installed and operational under loop control prior to April 4, 2022. With these elements complete, traffic can shift to the southern lanes as construction continues on the northern side of the street. This is not the ideal situation. In the opinion of city staff, these items, these items at minimum need to be completed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Even with the street improvements completed to this point, there could be traffic issues at peak travel times along this segment of East 10th Street. This amendment also allows a financial guarantee to be submitted for elements of the planned commercial development requirements, if not completed prior to April 6, 2022. The amendment to the infrastructure agreement would prevent a certificate of occupancy to be issued for Food City only until street constructions are complete on this phase of East 10th Street. Well, this is the amendment. Before you guys tonight, I respectfully request your approval, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions the council has regarding this amendment to the agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
The question.
We've got to have a motion. Motion first. Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Okay, now, comments or questions from the council?
Thank you. John, when is the final deadline for these items to be completed?
We're holding financial guarantees. They have been extended until just beyond April 6, 2022, for the developers' portion of the improvements. This is a situation where the city assumed some of the responsibilities for these street improvements, the developer assumed others, and all that was worked out through the original infrastructure agreement. That being said, the, the improvements that need to be completed on the north side will be, you know, I think it could be a couple months into the future, beyond that opening date before they're fully complete, because, you know, as with any of these projects, it's really dependent on the weather.
So the people can expect all of the improvements for that area to be done by midsummer at the very?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've asked, Public Works had estimated initially, you know, the end of May would be, you know, would be a realistic timeline, and, you know, we're seeing a lot of activity over there right now as Food City's nearing completion. You know, they got a lot of work done on the southern lanes today with the installation of some base stone. So, I mean, the amendment stipulates what we feel, you know, at minimum would need to be completed, and, you know, we'd hope that everything else moves fairly quickly moving forward.
Mr. Mann, I'd also like to point out, I mean, we, we did do a lot of limitations on this as a PCD upfront, and knowing that the timeline on this is very soon, you know, having a little patience for that in the community and letting them get open and hire people in the community, I think would be a good thing. The developers certainly have, have done a lot that's not normally required in those developments to appease that PCD requirement. And, you know, knowing that this won't last too long, I think, I'm happy that we're going to do this.
And Food City signed on to the agreement, correct? Food City is a party to the amendment. They've not, they've not been a party to any of the previous agreements, so they, they will be party to this agreement, to this amendment to the agreement.
I've got some board to note that they now have skin in the game, and that came at Dan's recommendation, and we appreciate that, to include them as a party in this. So they're on the hook for certain improvements, too.
And, and so, and the traffic control or anything like that's going to be taken care of by who? Is that going to be the responsibility of who?
The amendment states that if necessary, as determined by Public Works and the Cookeville Police Department, that the developers would be necessary for any, you know, traffic control measures that may be necessary due to the grocery opening prior to the completion of the street.
Okay. And then this last sentence, this last bullet about no other certificate of occupancy, I just, I think it needs to be absolutely overstated, that there will be no other certificate of occupancy issued, no matter what, no matter what the case, or no matter what the request is, other than for Food City until this is completely completed, and that's what this bullet says, right, Dan? I mean, that clearly says that, so there will not be another one.
I believe that's been clearly communicated to the developers, and everyone understands that.
And there's other buildings that have already been started.
Yeah, there's, there's one that's vertical already.
Yeah.
And activity on the other out parcels as well.
And they've got like the trap, or the traffic light arms are already installed. They haven't put the lights on, but they're, they're moving along on that project.
Yeah, this, this agreement stipulates that the traffic signals would be operational under loop control, loop control a few days before that April 6 date, so we can make sure that the signal's functioning properly.
And James, you said they've already hired employees, like employees are ready to start working on April 6.
That's one of the things that they communicate to John and us, they have employees that will be on payroll April 6, and that's part of what's driving this, that if they don't open, they're going to have to pay them anyway.
I think they have employees working there now. You know, that's, they're, they've got a lot of activity inside that building at this point.
Other comments or questions from the council? All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven D, consider resolution R two two zero three oh eight, entering the contract with TDOT, Tennessee Department of Transportation for assistance in construction and completion of proposed industrial access highway relative to Tennessee Avenue improvements. Melinda Kiefer?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is part of TDOT, what they call State Industrial Access Program. We were happy to welcome Garrett Brothers Concrete as a new company into our community. We sold them a piece of land off of Tennessee Avenue with a stipulation that road improvements would be made. As we moved forward, we were fortunate enough to sell, just have a parcel just north of there, sell and become the new FedEx Ground hub. So now we have so much traffic on that little piece of Tennessee Avenue. The original SIA for Academy ends just at their rear entrance. So what we've requested is that the two businesses come together and partner, each be responsible for the grading and to base stone of the linear footage of their property lines. Then, our partners at TDOT, we're so thankful, have graciously found a way. State industrial access programs typically take about two years, and we don't have two years. So they know that, you know, and they've been able to, to change the program a little bit to where now they will come in on the back end of this partnership that we've been able to pull together, and they will do all the paving. So this resolution is just you all supporting us, being part of that state industrial access program, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. Seven E, consider authorizing the city manager execute sale documents for property located at 2690 Highlands Park Boulevard in reference to Project Husky. Melinda Kiefer?
An exciting project, Mayor and council. New companies in our community are always very exciting, and we're so happy to have them. But when you have one who is a current existing employer in your community, and they choose to expand within this community, it says so much more about who we are and the quality of our, our workforce, et cetera. We're asking that you authorize the city manager to execute the sale purchase documents, which were that close, that close to have them finished, for the sale of parcel D, Lot D, that would be across from Pacosa. This company will be creating a second facility. They will retain their existing facility, about 45 new jobs, $16 million in capital investment, and they are not requesting any tax incentives at this time. As we get closer to the project, obviously, many projects want to keep their name out for competition. This is a very strategic move for this company. We'll be really excited to share, and hopefully, as we get closer to closing the property, we can have a chance to celebrate.
Very good. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven F, consider awarding bid and authorizing city manager entering into an agreement for Kane Creek Shoreline Stabilization Project for Leisure Services Department, Rick Witz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We recently advertised and received bids for the Kane Creek Park Lake shoreline stabilization. This is a project that will reestablish that north shoreline and protect the paved path where it's encro, where the lake is encroaching on that paved path, protect that from future erosion. We received two bids, and I'm requesting your authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement with MAC Construction as the low bidder meeting specifications. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? Where's MAC Construction located?
Here in Cookeville.
Okay. Very good. Any other comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven G, consider repair to 2012 John Deere backhoe for Public Works Department, Greg Brown?
Mayor and council, we would like to repair or replace the engine and transmission in our 2012 John Deere backhoe. All other major components in the backhoe are in good repair. All other major components in the backhoe are in good repair. We feel this will extend the useful service life of the backhoe by several years. We had considered including a new backhoe in next year's budget, but the price for a similar backhoe is one up to $180,000, and it'll be a year delivery time, so we thought it would be best to go ahead and try to get this repaired, and hopefully, in several years, when we do need a backhoe, the price will drop some, the delivery time will be quicker. I would ask for a maximum repair cost of $50,000 to be approved. Request your approval.
Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
7H, consider awarding bid for Kane Creek Substation Power Transformer Electric Department, Carl Haney.
Mayor and council members, we received bids on a 69 kW power transformer for our Kane Creek Substation project. Pennsylvania Transformer was the lowest evaluated base bid at $1,600,229. Both bidders did have adders for some requested items that we asked them to add, such as warranty and bonding, and both did have escalators for raw materials due just to the way the market is right now with certain items like steel and copper. You know, on Pennsylvania Transformer, the adders were $105,391, and the escalated materials were $270,233. Of course, that's just a prediction for those. We looked at the market, the history of those items, and predicted it for the next 15 months, which is what the lead time is on this transformer. Of course, if the market does not change that much, we would not pay those, that amount for those escalated materials, it'd be whatever the market value is at that time. If it does go above that, then I would come back to you and give you that new amount. But the adjusted final price that we're looking at is $1,975,853. We'll note that that is still about $500,000 less than the next lowest bidder's base price without those adders and escalators on there. It does have a projected delivery date of May 30, 2023, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
7I, consider resolution R220305 authorizing providing for the financing for the construction of a water facilities project, including authorizing the execution of applications, contractual agreements, and other necessary documents, and making certain representations, certifications, and pledges of certain revenue in connection with such financing, Water Quality Control Department, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor, back in September of 2020, the city of Coogville made a funding request with state revolving loan fund for a loan to fund our water treatment plant expansion in the amount of $17,500. So, the request tonight is to council to authorize the mayor to execute the applications, contractual agreements, and other necessary documents, and make certain representations, certifications, and pledges of certain revenue in connection with this loan. What's precipitated, this is the, we're about at 80% of our capacity at the water plant, and so we started in 19, looking, talking to engineers, it'll be a two-year construction. So, you can see on the YouTube slide there, it'll be adding 50% of capacity and get us up to 22.5 million dollars, or 22.5 million gallons. It's going to add some filters, clarifiers, and so forth. It's a treatment, last piece of the puzzle we've been working on since the 90s of how we're going to double plant capacity, and so this is just the last piece of the treatment part, portion, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? Yes, Councilman Miller.
In 2007, I noticed that we were above capacity. Is there a reason on that graph?
In 2007?
Around 2007.
Right there?
Right.
There was a drought of seven and eight. We had drought conditions. So, you've also got to, you can have average usage, but you also need to be able to have enough capacity for those drought conditions, too, so trying to keep ahead of the curve.
Any other questions?
I just think this is a really important addition to our city's infrastructure, and, you know, it's going to last us years to come, over a decade, and hopefully, and, you know, with the growth that we're seeing, this is a very important thing, and a large amount of money that the city's going to be investing.
When was this originally built?
If you remember, I did a history, you know, it started in the spring over here where the water started, but the plant was built in 70. It was doubled in 83, and now we're going to add 50% this year.
So, when this was originally built, this was designed so that this very thing could happen, right, so that it could be added on to, pretty much in place?
Yeah, it was sort of built where you could double the existing one, and there's enough room there. We've looked at, is there enough room then to double, and then get to the ultimate of 30 million gallon capacity? Once we reach that point, you may have to look at some property land acquisition, different plant site.
Very good.
If I could, I want to point out that it's not all this for the city of Coogville. This benefits most of Putnam County and areas beyond, because wrong sells water to a lot of people.
Yeah, we think it, I was doing some napkin calculate. I think it's probably 90,000 plus people in this region that our water travels. Do we go to Grand, it goes down to Granville through utility districts, but it travels a long way.
Right. Very good. All right, we have a motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. 7J, consider resolution R220306 tentative award of the city of Coogville Water Treatment Plant Expansion Improvement Project Construction Bid. Ronnie Kelly.
SRF is a requirement for the council to do a tentative award, so I'm requesting the council do a tentative award on that project to WNO construction at the total price of $25,427. This tentative award is contingent upon approval of the Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation, their state revolving loan fund, and it's noted that the city will be responsible for any additional funding needed to award the contract. So, it authorizes the mayor to sign the documents to proceed with construction. I think I had, I got a bid tab there to show you who the bidders were. WNO, most agree with Mayor of WNO Construction, they've done quite a bit of work with this in the past, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. 7K, consider authorizing city manager entering the engineering contract, 2021 CDBG West End Range Basin Pump Station Replacement and Sewer Line Rehab Project. Barry Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this is a rehab project which we were awarded a community development block grant to do, as I hope you all are aware of. This slide here shows the area of the basin, as well as the manholes and sewer line that we're looking to rehab. We've negotiated the engineering contract with CTI engineers. Contract amount's 105,000, which is the amount that we put into the application for the grant. This includes the design for the pump station, rehab the 4,100 feet of sewer line, and rehabbing 23 manholes and about 44 laterals, includes part-time inspection, and I recommend you all's approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. 7L, consider approval of settlement agreement with Westfeld Insurance Company, surety for J&amp;H Construction relative to the 2019 cured and placed pipe project that the council approved on 2/7/19. Barry Turner.
We had a construction contract, it was rehab job with J&amp;H Construction of Coogville, and they failed to complete the job. We were working with them, tried to get them to finish, and couldn't get it done. It took bankruptcy. We've been working with the surety company to get them to finish the job through their performance bond. We've been negotiating with them, and as it shows, the original contract amount on this was about 378,000. They only lacked about 41,000 as they bid the job, to finish the job, but we just couldn't get it done, couldn't get them to finish. We've negotiated a price, because we estimate now that the cost to finish the job would be about 95,000, which is a difference of $53,968.15. So, we have a settlement agreement, which I recommend your approval, and Dan has looked at this, and this will get this behind us.
This is all the money, the money now to finish the project, so we're even, that's what the bonding company is for.
Very good. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council?
Will this be rebid?
We'll actually put this work in probably about three different contracts, because part of it's some manhole work, some of it's cured and placed lining work, and we think we can get better prices, splitting it up is what a little bit was left, and we've got actually part of it fixed and go out to bid since we get approval on this.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. 7M, consider approval of amendment settlement agreement with Sheridan Family Enterprises, the council approved on 5/20/21 in relation to the sewer. Barry Turner.
We had an agreement with the Sherdons to extend sewer up to the interchange, and we were planning on sewer in the county property through a gravity line that was coming through the counties, this where the firegrounds are going there, north of Sheridan property. This shows the way the Sherdons were being connected, and the county is now looking to connect to this sewer instead of the gravity sewer that we're doing. In order to accommodate the county property, there had to be some upgrades to what was designed for the Sheridan property. This involved upsizing some pipe, additional bore under Hawkins Crawford, and the cost of additions was $44,950. They had a total price to do their job at $525,995. The current agreement requires that we split the cost 50/50, but this 45, near $45,000 add is just solely for the purpose of accommodating the county property, so they've asked that we not cost share that, which, this is what this agreement would do, it'd remove that 45,000 from the agreement, we'd just cost split the balance remaining, and we'd pick up that additional cost, so I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion is second. Any questions from the council?
Does this save the city money by not running a sewer line to the firegrounds, or?
It does, in that, of course, there may be some need in the future to run that line. The way we're looking at it now, though, when we're doing a master plan, we would not ever run that line. We think we have, we'll try to move some of the flow north, maybe eventually even to the Cumberland River or something, so we're looking at large, long-range plans, and...
We do, still do plan to extend sewer, or the county will, when they develop their property, we connect to this, and that's why we're doing this up.
Yes, but the gravity line is what I would not have to be run, that would cost. Of course, we were looking for the county to pay a lot of that as well.
Yeah, none of this would be available if we weren't running sewer out into that area.
That's correct.
This was a part of the settlement that was built Tennessee Avenue with Sheridan Family to do this cost share, and this is just a final addition to that, that they're really, wouldn't have any role in, so it's not fair to charge them for another part of the project.
Gotcha. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five oh, motion carries. That concludes our agenda portion. Thank you, Barry. That concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time at the end for citizens that would like to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone? Anybody in the council? Yes, Councilwoman.
I'd like to remind everyone about what's happened since February the 24th, when the Russians invaded Ukraine, and there've been a lot of refugees, millions of them, and most of them children, and we were very generous here in Putnam County in sending money to the victims of the tornado up in Kentucky, but I'd like to remind people that they can do individually, give, and it's just that you can go online and use your credit card and give money to UNICEF USA for the, especially for the children victims of the massive invasion of Ukraine, and it's just been amazing seeing the courage of the people of Ukraine, and I think we should think about doing our part. I've donated, and I'd like to recommend that everyone think about donating to the young victims of the horrible invasion of Ukraine.
Anybody else? This is Assad, may have heard. I know it's been various outlets. The Coogville Regional actually donated several pallets of medical supplies that's going to Poland to aid, aid in the help of people that are fleeing Ukraine, so those went out Monday to help, so that certainly is a good thing. Anybody else? We're adjourned.